If you're ready. We'll call to order this regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Today is March 15th at 6:30 PM. And I'll make note that all selectmen are in attendance. The first item on our agenda, or the second item, is approval of minutes. And from our March 1st meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 1st meeting as written.
I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Blessington.
Aye.
Maritz.
Abstain. I wasn't here for the whole meeting.
Wischinsky.
Aye. My motion carries. The next item is present to speak. If there is anyone on the meeting who would like to speak, you can, you have the ability to unmute yourself. We ask that you state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. And if anyone wanted wishing to speak, I see Mr. Wischinsky is unmuted. I don't know if he intends to speak. Either raise your hand in the chat feature in the participants tab, or unmute yourself. All right, seeing no one present to speak, there will be an opportunity again at the end of this meeting. Next item is correspondence. You see that there was, each of you received the correspondence from the Board of Finance asking us to enter into a discussion regarding ambulance service funding with the Town of Union. We, I am willing to start the conversation with my counterpart in Union, or would you like us all to partake in a meeting together?
Um, I'm not, I would be interested in, I mean, for the sake of efficiency, you having an initial conversation to get like a general, to gauge the general feeling over in Union and then report back on that conversation and then figure out next steps from there. I mean, if it's something that seems like it's an easy, yes, let's make a plan for this, then it doesn't seem like it warrants all of us trying to coordinate schedules for the three of us, plus probably Heather, plus, you know, them and however many people they need. So I think making an initial outreach is probably wise and then going from there based on their thoughts and feedback.
John?
I would agree with Liza on that. You should start it and then we can work from there.
All right, I will reach out and then from there we'll determine if we need to bring in the Board of Finance and the Fire Department because certainly the agreement is with Wellington Fire Department number one. And if you recall, we have a service agreement with them. They are private corporation, separate corporation. And so this is their contract, which we're kind of getting involved with. So there's going to be some sticky parts there, but we'll start the conversation. All right. Next is anything else on correspondence?
Yeah, I did have a question. We had a, we had a, some correspondence from somebody which we're going to be dealing with later on about becoming, about the appointment for the Planning, Zoning Commission. I just thought, shouldn't that have been noted on this correspondence as well?
It, I think, what was it?
I mean, I know it's on the.
It was given to you in the manner of the, the business of the meeting?
Yes.
So I think that's where it's noted. I don't know that would typically, did it come in a letter? Heather, an email?
It came in an email.
Yeah, and we don't know every email correspondence that comes through, especially in this instance, and we haven't in any of the ones in the past when they emailed our office for consideration for appointment. So we can talk about that, but that has not been the practice with any other appointment email. They're saved in our email, um, based on retention schedule. So we don't make a practice of deleting emails unless it's junk email, et cetera.
Okay, well, just for any item that's going to eventually be on the, on the next meeting that comes to us through email or through snail mail or whatever. The first I heard of this was when I got the agenda Friday afternoon. So.
It's the, the original letter had come to us and we didn't believe there was an opening because it was slated to be on the last, our last board meeting and after some confusion and clarification out of the town clerk's office and planning and zoning, there was determined that they do have a full vacancy and thus it carried forward. Originally, the communication came to us, but there was not an opening. And John, as a, just a point, again, we've been doing appointments regularly, at least in my term, and this is the first time anyone has asked that they let her, asking for an appointment be listed. It's part of the record, but we can certainly add it to that list.
Okay, I really think we should, but.
Sure, we'll do it for all of them, not just this one.
Okay, true.
All right, anything else for correspondence? Okay, first selectman update. I have no new update on the steep grant. We're still waiting for the state to initiate that portion. The Emergency Communications Task Force is on the agenda later tonight, so I'll let that speak for itself then. The School Building Committee, the next meeting is this Wednesday, and that'll be on Zoom, so you can check our website for the Zoom login to attend that meeting. The Lots of Grant, we are still working with CROG as they can oversee all of the Lots of Projects and Mike is currently working with DOT at the insistence of CROG to coordinate portions of their, of the project from their standalone project. So they had a standalone project that's going to be in front of Hall School in the same area, doing some separate things from our project. So he's working with them to coordinate their pieces. And then the next step is an RFP for the final design as, you know, we transferred money through Board of Finance last month, the 22,000, and so they'll go out to bid for the RFP for that. So keep you posted. That brings us to Public Works. Troy is, we gave him a day off, so he's not with us tonight. Public Works, his report, there's continued roadside mowing. They fixed a culvert on Daleville Road, did some brush chipping on Clint Eldridge Road, patched potholes around town, continue to pick up trash at the park. They moved all the wood that was cut from the trees on Old Farms Road. They've been working on our sweeper. It needed some significant repairs. We were able to use the old sweeper that we had to kind of pick from, which is why we kept the old one, with this new to us, but not very new sweeper. And so they're working on that so they can begin sweeping, knock on wood. We will sweep and then won't need to put anything else down. And they've been chipping brush from the windstorm last week. In addition to that, we had a resignation from a Public Works Department member, Todd Hetlinger. His last day is going to be this Friday, the 19th. And so the position, as you know, first, any new position has to be posted within internally, within the Union first for five days. So we did have a Public Works member apply, and we've made an offer to them for that. So I anticipate the signed acceptance of that position tomorrow, and then that will leave their position open. We'll have to post that again internally for five days, and then if it's not filled internally, we'll post it out for two weeks. So we'll keep you posted, but in the meantime, that leaves us down a full-time Public Works crew member. With our very small crew, not having someone as critical. The, here's a hot topic. I'm sure you're all on the edge of your seats. Troy and I were talking about opening the swap shed. Hold your hats. That's going to happen in April. We're looking at April 10th, that Saturday. It's the weekend after Easter. It's not definitive yet, but that's the date we're looking at. I'll have an absolute final answer for you at our April 5th meeting. So we will ask people to wear masks and socially distant, not linger. It is going to be something difficult with our, you know, two crew members who have lots to do, you know, to be able to monitor. If we think things are, you know, not safe or getting out of control, we'll close it down again if we have to, but we don't want to do that. So once we open, we'd like to be open. So we're going to really ask our residents to be vigilant. If you see someone in the swap shed, maybe wait, but we, what we don't want is a backup of cars either. So we'll have more details at our next meeting with a definitive date. So I think you, maybe you recall back last year when we closed everything down, and get a whole lot of angry phone calls about the town office building being closed, but the swap shed being closed. Now that was a hot topic. So I think after almost a year, people will, they'll be happy to hear it's opening up. I know I have a pile of things to put into it once it opens, so people gather your belongings. Any questions on correspondence?
Public Works, yeah, speaking of the swap shed, is there any plans to reopen the Boy Scouts bottle return?
So that's, I think that's something we can talk about. Certainly the Boy Scouts, the last time I talked to them, they weren't ready to move in that direction yet. So when they're ready, that certainly is a lot of hands-on work for their scouts. And so we'll, we'll continue conversations. We're not prohibiting that at this point, but I know the last time Ken Fluid and I had a conversation, they weren't quite ready. We weren't and they weren't, and so we'll keep talking about it.
Okay.
So, but if we can get them back again, you know, people will, you know, it's, this is more people around the swap shed and, I mean, around the transfer station in different areas. And, you know, a lot more to manage, but until those scouts are ready to be hands-on touching those items, we're not going to move in any direction. Anything else on Public Works? Okay, new business. We have, there is a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have one active alternate and that alternate has been seated at the majority of their meetings. And we have a relatively new resident to Wellington, but I don't believe he's new to public service. Has shown interest in making a contribution to our Planning and Zoning Committee. So we had, you both have a letter from John Tien. John is on the line, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion so that we can have some discussion. See if it's seconded. I'll move to a point. John F. Tien, as a regular member of the Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission, effective, I'm sorry, filling a vacancy effective March 16th, 2021, expiring 11/16/2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, for discussion. I see John is on the call with us. John, if you'd like to share anything with us, it is not required, but if you would like to, you know, share anything, we did get your letter about your experiences or your desire to serve, you can unmute yourself if you wish.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. My wife and I moved here to Wellington from Milford, Massachusetts. I've actually spent a good few years of my youth in this area. I went to UConn back when the world was young. World's not quite so young anymore. We have a tradition of public service. My wife and I, in Milford, we were elected town meeting members. I chaired a committee in Milford, the Renewable Energy Advisory Committee, and I'd just be happy to continue kind of a tradition of service. And this opportunity to look good, I think it's a good fit with my, my skill sets. I have an engineering background and an analytical background. And I think that it'll be a real good fit for me, so.
And John, you're aware that this vacancy is only until our next municipal election?
Yes, yep.
All right, John or Liza, do you have any questions for John?
Yes.
John?
Mr. Tien, you said in your letter that you hoped to run for the position in the coming elections. Have you, have you been in touch with either of the political parties?
Yes, I've been in touch with the Wellington Democratic Town Committee, and I actually got elected to the committee this past week.
Oh, okay. I wondered why they didn't endorse you for this position, but that's fine.
Anything else, John? Liza?
Yeah.
Thank you, Blessington. So I'm talking to the selectman now.
No, I read the letter and thank you for coming and speaking with us as well. I have no questions.
Welcome aboard.
Right.
I think we have to vote officially first.
Welcome aboard.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Blessington.
Aye.
Maritz.
Aye.
Wischinsky.
Aye. Right, motion carries. Mr. Tien, we thank you so much for your willingness to serve in this capacity. Again, welcome to Wellington. You will get a letter from our office, but in the meantime, you can reach out to the town clerk regarding being sworn in.
Terrific, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and you're more than welcome to stay on the rest of our meeting, but we won't make you.
Actually, my wife and I are about to have dinner, so.
We'll enjoy your dinner. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right, the next item is Emergency Communications Task Force. This task force, as you know, was born out of the incident here in Wellington back in May of last year. And our continued need to be able to communicate with our residents in a manner that we can control. And so that committee has been working diligently. Alex Moore serves, represents Wellington One Fire Department. We had representatives from the community at large, myself, someone from the state police, members of the public and members of both fire departments on, on this committee. So their charge was eventually to bring back a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And so at this point, I will turn this over to Chief Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We did do a survey through the residents. We did send it out through Survey Monkey, I believe it was. Do you actually want to go through that, Erica, or?
Would like, do you have it or you want me to?
If you can, I don't have it open. Real quick, we did meet with two different vendors for communication software, one being Everbridge, which the state uses, and the other one was Code Red, which there are some towns in the state that use it. So our biggest thing was trying to figure out what residents actually would like to be notified of. And we sent this survey out, and I think we got a lot more responses than we had anticipated. We had almost 3, 300
299.
299 responses back in the couple of weeks that the survey was open.
Well, I apologize that the PowerPoint that Sarah sent us is not opening. Let me see if I can open the spreadsheet.
Sorry, I was trying to get it open, but it's been a little hectic.
Yeah, it, it's asking me to repair it, so unfortunately, it's not opening. We do have the written.
That's okay, I'll just go through.
Yeah, because I do have the, I mean, I have copies of the slides.
Okay, I can just go through a brief highlight real quick. Some of the questions were what people would like to be notified, emergencies, town meetings, road closures and such. There was an overwhelming response that people would like to be notified of an emergency in their area. There was, and also the response was pretty high for road closures. And there was some for, like, town meetings and such, but to be on a different notification scale, not as an emergency, but to be able to send a message out. So the committee has voted and make the recommendation to move forward with Everbridge, which was the more expensive option of the two, but because of the familiarity with people knowing how to run that system already and being able to use the state to help us if we needed to with that, to get a message out through our platform, we could do that. That was the biggest reasons with going for that. Those are just some very quick highlights. The committee still needs, if, if the Board of Selectmen wish to move forward doing policies and such, once we get the program, as to how to run it, who's going to run it, who's going to be authorized to put messages out, what kind of messages and such. There's still a lot of legwork that would have to be done once the program is purchased, but the committee's agreed to help do that moving forward.
So like Chief Moore said, the board, the task force recommended to this board to consider purchasing the Everbridge. That is the placeholder we put in our budget. I felt that it was important then. I am, I was happy to see that the survey results matched what we thought and what we had been hearing and, and talking about for some time, that people in our town would like a better way of communicating with them. This will allow us to do that using the Everbridge system. One of the main reasons the group considered that, or I thought the recommendation to us would be using that, utilizing that system over Code Red was the number of users in our area and that familiarity, knowing that Chief Moore has some knowledge, working knowledge of it. Doug Raceacott, who came to us and showed us the product, who works in Tallinn as well as at TN, has vast knowledge of that. There is no, either one of these systems, we would be building our database from scratch. It would mean a lot of public outreach. There is no way to carry numbers over from people who are using the current CT alert system that goes out through Everbridge. So we would, you know, need to do some educating to get folks to sign, to sign up and sign in if, if this in fact moves forward. Questions, John, Liza, comments?
So this would be creating an additional sort of, I mean, for lack of a better understanding of the program, but this would be sort of creating a new sort of chat group rather than using what's currently collected and existing within the system.
Correct, so right now.
We started, we started completely over.
Yeah, so when you sign in, you're signing into the Connecticut's reverse 911 system, we don't have access to all of that, the people who signed into that. When you, and this goes for any town, when you've signed into your own, specifically with Everbridge, you need to build up, they're, they're dialing into just your group. And they would still get those, if they're signed up with the state, they'll still get those separate state alerts. So there is definitely some work to be done as far as outreach and constant marketing and promoting of that. You know, every time we have a big town event, you know, you have a place where people can sign up and, you know, tell them a little bit about what it is. And this is, they use this in Tallinn, Bansfield uses Code Red, but they don't use it necessarily in the same way and as very often. But the resources we have in Wellington with this system, it seems, it seemed like the, the better option to go, although then, you know, in the end, if this is within our budget, it will be up to, you know, this board to determine which product we use, but that was the recommendation.
Was there a conversation about what would go through the reverse 911 system? So essentially the Everbridge that currently exists versus the Everbridge that would be Wellington specific?
Yep, so there was a lot of conversation with that, especially with Lieutenant Palmer. Any big incident or anything that would involve the law enforcement or fire department, stuff like that, would still have to be vetted and it would still go through the same system. So if people were driving through town and were, have the, an Everbridge app on their phone or something like that, they would still be notified if they're in, within that radius. And it would still pull off the state's database for that area rather than just what we enter into it.
So if we use the example of the incident in May, that initial communication would have come out of the, of the state's reverse 911 system and that database. And if we wanted to send additional updates, and they may be as simple as saying, you know, the, the text that goes out could be, check our website for, you know, the most current update. And that would then transfer to our system. You would, they're very specific uses on the state system. And then the road, the town would take over, but if, like last week, we had that twin storm and we had some roads closed, we'd use our system to send out road closures and we would not use the reverse 911. If I wanted to send a town-specific COVID message, we could use our system. For instance, the swap shed is reopening again. You know, or, you know, Old Farms Road is closed because of a fire or because of downed trees and wires. But those large-scale incidents that would affect probably the whole town on a major incident scale would be used by the reverse 911. Do you think of that as more, what would I make a 911 call about versus information sake? John, any comments or questions?
Oh. No, it sounds like it's going along pretty good.
I'm sorry, I had one more question about that.
Absolutely.
Um, so in that situation, say it's something that is a reverse 911, would then, would we would we send it out through a reverse 911 system as well as the Wellington system because there conceivably, those two lists are not the same? So if I'm signed up, so just because somebody signed up for the, the state of Connecticut reverse 911 doesn't mean they're in the Wellington list and vice versa. So then those big messages that are reverse 911 messages, would they then be going out to both lists to cover everybody?
Yes, providing they are in, so usually it's something in the reverse 911s, for the exception of what we've done with like the COVID notifications. Large-scale incidences are usually area-specific, two, three, four miles around the incident, not always town-wide. So those would hit both sys, systems off of one message, because if you're entered through the town, you still get, if it's in a, you'll, you'll be signed into the system. You'll still get that notification.
And, and like that, oh, I'm sorry, as we develop the policy for utilization of the system, that's something we'd want to, you know, talk about and discuss and make sure we, you know, put some language in there. Because honestly, that's not something I thought about, because it picks it up as like a geo-fence. So if you're, if that's the benefit to using Everbridge, is that if you're signed up on the Wellington one, but it goes out through the E911, but you're in that vicinity and, or if you live in Maine and you're driving through and you use that system, then it will pick you up if you're in that specific area. But those are all things to talk about and discuss. Now, what, once we decide you go with a system, we need a policy for when and how it's used. To John's point, when we first started talking about this, you know, we don't want to use it for, there's a bake sale at.
Right.
Correct.
Such and such, and, you know, those mundane things, we want to utilize it so that people don't opt out. From a grander scale, COVID saw a lot of folks removing themselves from the E911 system and from the CT alert system. And so there's some concern that that oversaturation of information said, you know, people saw it like spam and stopped utilizing it. They tried to separate and have just a COVID, now sign up for these COVID alerts separate from the E911, hoping that that would level that out. And why the state really came down on municipality, saying you have to think about what you're sending and its importance before you start using these systems.
And that was, that was kind of like where my question was coming from, because I would imagine if like, I get every time there's a big thing that happens, I get double texts of anything. I personally wouldn't unsubscribe, but I can absolutely imagine somebody being just irritated enough to be like, ugh, opt out. And then we're back where we started, where we don't have a reliable system because. opt out. And then we're back where we started, where we don't have a reliable system, because it's just too annoying, right? And not streamlined enough. So that was where my question was coming from. But I hear you. I know that there's a lot to work out and everything is preliminary at this point.
And that's honestly not something I thought about. Would we send it out if E nine one one sent it out? So those are good, good talking points. Make note of that. All right. So normally I would say we would need to look at moving in a forward direction from our board, but we made, this board approved a budget that included those dollars in it. So as we see what transpires in the budget process, and if that flushes out into, you know, stays within our budget, then we'll move in a forward direction if this board still wants to. I know when I suggested we put it on the budget, even in absence of the recommendation, because I thought it was important. And this group did not opt to, to take that off or cut that from the budget as it stands right now. That's not to say we couldn't. So moving forward. Right, going once, going twice. Chief Moore, thank you so much. All right. And I want to thank the task force for the work that they did. We did say that then this would carry on to, to our board and we would need to come up with policies. I would encourage us to consider using that task force. And in its status to develop policies that then they could bring to this board for approval and recommendations along the way. And I think they're a great resource and Lieutenant Palmer is absolutely willing to still continue in that manner. He did, just so you're aware, and it's in the minutes from this meeting, he did abstain from voting on this motion specifically because it it made the town potentially responsible for fiscal responsibilities. And so he abstained for that reason while he believes it's necessary. He is cognizant of the fact that in his role in the state police, it's not up to him to put burden, financial burdens on the town. But supports working with us to work on specific messaging that could go out in certain instances. Again, while working with the state police, like some canned messages, for instance. I want to thank that group for all the work that they did. And let our residents know that, you know, we took it seriously then, we still take it seriously and we're moving in a direction to try to adequately communicate, effectively communicate with you in methods that people are willing to hear right now. I think text message is a big communication point. All right. So if no other questions, Alex, we will not be offended if you have to get back to work.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Thank you, you as well. All right, COVID nineteen update. You see me clicking, it's because I want to just check the most recent COVID data. All right. So since our last meeting, Wellington has had six. Oh, no, I lie, the number has gone up. We're at two twenty-one, seven positive COVID tests. And we have fifteen probable cases in the number of total deaths in the entire course of the last year, it still stands at three. So we've only had six, we're at two twenty plus fifteen probable. Again, those numbers are staying relatively low. At our last meeting, I told you we had moved from the red level alert to orange and that I anticipated us being in the yellow will Thursday, we did bump down to yellow. So we had only had seven over a two-week period of time that was through March sixth. So we're still continuing, continuing to see that consistent decline. There's certainly some concern as we get close to the spring break time and whether or not we'll see a resurgence of things, but the state's overall positivity rate is still low. It's just over two percent. So that, you know, there's some positive things happening there and I hope to see us stay in this direction. Again, a positive tread, still need to remain cautious in an alert, but more and more folks are being vaccinated. So I'll talk to you about that. Interrupt me at any time. The governor today announced another pivot in the vaccine rollout. So, you know, he moved to cohorts by age. I tend to think maybe they heard some of the rumblings from people with that. So the eligibility for residents forty-five to fifty-four is beginning this Friday, March nineteenth, instead of the twenty-second. And then the next group will be the remainder of eligible residents sixteen to forty-four. And so that's tentatively set for April fifth. I will tell you that as of today, they're going on about a sixty percent assumption in each of these cohorts, that about sixty percent will go out and get the vaccine right off the bat. And then later, there'll be some work done to try to encourage the remainder of people who didn't get vaccinated and encourage them to do so. And so of the four, about four hundred and seventy-seven thousand people in the forty-five to fifty-four range, about eighty-five thousand of those have already been vaccinated because they fell into previous categories, whether they were medical EMS, school staff, daycare are in a long-term care facility. So of that, the sixty percent of the four hundred and seventy-seven, you know, they're already down eighty-five thousand. So they feel confident with that in the supply of about two hundred thousand vaccine, vaccines a week that they can adequately vaccinate people moving forward. The state also said they'll work with providers and Department of Developmental Services to accelerate access for medically high-risk individuals who are under the age of forty-five during the month of April. So really trying to hone in on those that are medically compromised, who from the beginning, you know, we've said are in the most vulnerable age. So any questions about that new rollout? Okay. We will conduct our follow-up second dose clinic on March twenty-fourth, Wednesday, March twenty-fourth at Wellington Woods. So remember on February twenty-fourth, we held the clinic working with Town of Vernon in Eastern Highlands and Access. So it's be the same group of people getting their second dose then. So Wellington Public Schools held their successful clinic last Tuesday, March ninth. So the school staff that qualified and wanted a vaccine were able to obtain a vaccine last week. And their second dose clinic is scheduled for April sixth. And vaccine data specifically for Wellington, it was released last week. So this was as of March eighth. We had nineteen point oh seven percent of residents vaccinated, ninety point one three residents, sixty-five and over vaccinated and eighty-seven point ten of our seventy-five and over vaccinated. So those percentages are above the state rate. So, you know, our sixty-five and over population certainly, you know, came out, especially that sixty-five and over. There aren't Wellington-specific data yet for fifty-five and over, but the state is saying about forty percent of the fifty-five and over group is gotten a first dose vaccine. So we're certainly, we're moving in a positive direction. In the next month, we should really see that first dose number go up. All right. The current emergency declaration extension is still set to expire on Tuesday, midnight, eleven fifty-nine on April nineteenth, so beginning April twentieth. As of right now, that order will not be in place. We don't know the full implications of it, if it just expires. Our town meeting is on April twentieth. I have some concerns of just suddenly dropping everything and returning to normal. We have nineteen percent of our residents vaccinated, the remainder not, if they don't feel comfortable coming to a meeting. Unless we're given some guidance from the state, we have no choice but to hold an in-person meeting, because the statute on town meetings is very clear. I did bring this up on Wednesday to our weekly governor's municipal leader call. Paul Hounds said we are the earliest town meeting that he's heard of. So they're certainly taking note. If they're looking and allowing for that hybrid and working with the legislature to, to continue the ability to hold a hybrid town meeting, I've asked that they move quicker than normal, so that we can allow that, or make that option open to our residents. So in this office, Heather and I are working to hold and have everything we have in place to hold a hybrid town meeting. If we can, unless something changes, that option was by executive order and that goes away at midnight. So I will keep you posted. Our plan is to have a hybrid meeting, which means some people can come in person and some people could go over. But if, if the law, current law at the time doesn't exist, then it will be an in-person town meeting. So stay tuned. I feel like we're saying that a lot, but everything here is fluid. In good news, as we meet here, the Board of Assessment Appeals is having an in-person hybrid meeting in the town office building. So they're using our new equipment. It's a board of three, so it's a great board to start with. It's small board. The three of them are masked in that room, holding a meeting on Zoom. I think they were expecting at least one participant to come in person and then someone else by Zoom. So the room is set up with very few chairs, six feet apart. And they're masked, but we're doing it. You know, we're going to find a way to get there. And so stay tuned. Well, you know, I'll let you know how it goes. I would have loved to, you know, at least sat in the back of the room in an empty seat to, to see how everything goes, but the timing is such that it didn't work out. So I want to thank them for their willingness to be in person, that board. So I would like us to try our next meeting in that fashion. But you're certainly not required to be in person. Even after the governor's order expires, there has always been a provision for board members to call into in this fashion or by old-fashioned telephone into a meeting. I think we've had to utilize that in the past. That's always existed to us and that can continue. So if a board member, when we go back to in-person, still does not want to be in the room, they can still participate in another way. And I think it's important that we give them that option. So at the very least, at our next meeting, I think Heather and I are going to be in that room using the equipment. And if either of you would like to join us, we'll start with just our board, not the public, and we'll hold a Zoom meeting to Giant TV, so we can see folks and monitor it. But before everything goes away and we're forced in person without kind of easing ourselves into it, I think this is a good way. But I'd like your thoughts and your input on that.
I would be there. I would like to do that. I think it's a good idea.
Liza?
Yeah, I, I have to think about that, but I mean, I think if it's us in the room and then participants virtual, I don't have concerns with that as much. I mean, that's, I've absolutely like been in a store and that's you know, and if we can like socially distance well, then I'm
So right now the table is, yeah, the table is set for three, because they're a three-member board. And then their secretary off to the side. So we have a setup right now that, so we could be in the room, the camera will capture all of us. And then we'd see everybody, we'd be in one little box and everybody else would be in another, but we would be in the same room together. The only difference is we'd be masked, so we don't, you know, fully see each other. So there is a downside to us going away from Zoom. There's a downside to Zoom and then there's a downside to being in the room. But I think it's important that we still remain vigilant of the cognizant of the safety of all of our residents, including our board members. So if anytime someone wasn't comfortable with that, then we would adjust and we can open windows to increase the ventilation. We have air purifiers. So we have protections in place and then move to, you know, slowly allowing the public in until such time as we have to go back to typical business. But if you're both open to that, I'm not going to hold you two wanting to be in the room, but we're going to try it like that. So at least Heather and I will sit in that room at the next meeting. It'll be Heather's first in-person meeting. She's always here in the, in the town office building, but we have to, we have to move towards that. And so I feel better about it. I haven't been vaccinated yet, but still willing to do it with a mask on. I feel confident that there wouldn't be any contact between us. All right.
I, I agree and I am, I'm not, and I'm just missing the cutoff for the forty-five group. So not that I'm pushing time at all, I'm, I'm okay in some ways. But it is a little like, and I, I know we're, we're all just doing the best that we can. But it's a little funny to me slash frustrating that the, that we don't have more clarity around municipal business and getting back in, fully in person. When the conversation had been that municipal employees will get vaccinated early.
Right.
So that we can go back to in-person, but then they scrapped that plan. And so now we're just in age groups, which is fine, except if we're going to be rushed to going back in person, that's not fine anymore. So it's sort of feels like a catch twenty-two, right? That we're going to kind of be thrown into the fire a little bit. But I mean, as, as for a hybrid version with us, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, I guess just want to voice that I feel there's a little irony in that. The, the lack of extension of the town meeting forgiveness and, and doing our business virtually.
And so what they're really doing is, you know, letting the legislature take the lead on some of these things and working with them to determine whether or not some things could stay in place for a longer period of time, a shorter period of time. If there are some things we've been doing that maybe they want to look at adjusting permanently and allowing for these different resources. But once again, my, what I expressed to the governor's staff was, I can't wait until April nineteenth for you to make a decision. We have a meeting on April twentieth. And two weeks after that, we have a referendum. So and because we don't have a different method of handling our budget this year, and I don't believe that there is a necessity for it, that we need to continue to do business. So you need to to work a little bit faster on what you're thinking about doing. So we may be a little too early for that, but we'll see. Everything seems to come out about a week or two before these cutoffs. So we'll, we'll look for that. And as soon as we have information, I'll pass it along. Another opening I'm working on is opening the town office building to public beginning April nineteenth. So I don't have all of the details worked out, but we would ask people as much as possible to still try to make an appointment. But, you know, we have protections in this building for our staff. And we'll just, we'll go from open doors. So there'll be more touchpoints than there have been over the last year. If you haven't been in here, you see that everybody's office doors are open. And we go to closing them so that there is not access to the public into our offices, so we can keep that boundary between folks. So, you know, with our small staff and really by that point, only about half of us will be vaccinated. Because we do have quite a, an age mix and I can't even tell you where everyone falls age-wise. But we went from one big list to send into VAMs to now breaking everyone apart by age. So it's time to get back, starting to get back to a new normal. And that seems as good a time as any. So we're going to start that mid-April is our working point to move into things. Liza, do your comments about us being in the room? I'm feeling comfortable with a three-member board. I'm really struggling with, say, a board of finance where with their recording secretary, there's nine of them. And I'm not sure how you capture them all on the camera, six feet apart. It's next to impossible. So do they, you know, move to sitting closer to each other? And then you, you know, take people right out of their comfort zone. So again, that's where that caveat of board members being allowed to attend a meeting and calling into a meeting. If calling in is using a Zoom, then that works and that was expressed to us very clearly from the governor's legal staff. So I'll, you know, continue to tell people they do not have to be in the room to participate in meetings. And this equipment that we got allows us to see them, not just hear them on a telephone and have them participate in this way. So we're going to continue to do that. All right. And any input you have at any time, if you have some thoughts on it, you know, give us a call. or shoot an email over here. I'm open to any of your feedback on this. It was an easy response to close the doors, but opening them up takes a lot more work. And the more input we have, I think the better. So last week, the federal, we're calling it the ARP, the American Rescue Plan, was passed and signed Friday. Fast and Furious were emails from every rep we have. Senators, oh, excuse me. It go dark. Our senators, our congressmen, our state reps. Oh, let me go back. I did reach out to Dan Champagne, who's our state senator, and Tammy Nuccio, our state rep, to ask them to advocate for allowing that hybrid town meeting specifically. If the governor is working with the legislature to know that, you know, we we worried last year about disenfranchising all of our voters with the process of budgets and how they were passed. And now I think we would take out very specific groups of people who haven't had an opportunity to be vaccinated and make a choice. So Dan got back to me and did say he will he'll see what the governor's stance on that is and work with them. So I'll keep in communication. So the plan was signed. As of right now, I know what some of the proposed funding for Wellington is. Wellington is set to get five hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred seventy dollars in non-entitlement city money. And then a portion from the county funds. That will be based on our population. I do not know what that amount is yet. We haven't seen that one. I know I told you before, we were looking at seeing total somewhere near one point three million. I don't, you know, I don't know where that lies. We have seen broad acceptable uses, but nothing in more detailed, specific use on how the funds could be used. That's going to come from Treasury and I expected in the coming weeks with the last plan, they got it out in a month. So we're hoping they'll move a little bit sooner, but we're not sure. The money will be allocated in two tranches, one within ninety days. And that's because the money from Treasury, Treasury has sixty days to turn the money over to the state and the state has thirty days to turn it over to the town. Our money, because we're a non-entitlement city, is being funneled through the state. They don't get to make any extra decisions on how much we get or of this particular pot of money or how it's allocated, but it does go through the state to turn over to us. So we get the first one in ninety days, up to ninety days, and the second a year from now. The money must be spent by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-four. So we do have some time. It doesn't all need to be spent by the end of this fiscal year or even calendar year. What we do know is what the funds cannot be used for. There's two things. They cannot be used to deposit into any pension fund. And they cannot be used to directly or indirectly offset a tax cut. Now, that second one to me is a little subjective. Liza, you look like you have some thoughts on that.
Yes, because anytime well, I guess tax cut cut must be the operative word there. So if we're running at a deficit and we didn't have any additional funds coming in for through COVID relief, then what we're talking about is we would have to raise taxes to cover the deficit, right? So I guess it's, I mean, that feels like splitting hairs, but then that's not a cut since we aren't reducing taxes. We're just avoiding the raising of taxes because any way that we would use the funds would in essence, be making up a deficit unless we decided to use the funds to build an ice skating rink, which is something we would never do normally. You know what I mean? Like there's no way for it not to have a positive impact on taxes unless we're using it for frivolous purposes that we don't actually need.
And it can be used to repay lost revenue. That was something that the last funding did not allow us to do. So one of the uses is to replace revenue that was lost, delayed, or decreased. And they will use our last full fiscal year prior to the pandemic. So we're looking at eighteen nineteen. So already we're, you know, here in the TOB, working on gathering what we know we lost from nineteen twenty, right? That fiscal year is over. We know what we didn't get. And up-to-date revenues potentially lost. So you know, there's some encouragement to work with economic development and small businesses. You know, your residents. So where we're asking for and need more guidance is specific, more specific uses because if we feel like we need things as a result of COVID and we put them in our budget, and then we use to pay them, do we offset a tax cut? So they're saying they should be unbudgeted funds, but we're all building budgets. So we can't wait ninety days to build a budget. And we don't want to take things out of a budget because we don't know if they're going to fall into the acceptable use category. So there's a lot of discussion going back and forth between municipal leaders and our state partners who are working with our federal partners to, you know, take that feedback back to Treasury and help us with some guidance. Because if we took some things out of our budget and then turns out it didn't qualify, now what do you do? And as you all know, we're, you know, we're a month away from our annual town meeting that will adjourn to referendum. So we're kind of under the gun if we thought there were things in our budget that we were doing as a result of COVID. I can think of specifically one that's within our budget right now, and that's the remainder of the AV equipment for rooms. That to me is a COVID expense. It was born out of this pandemic and the way in which we provide access to meetings. So other and and right now that's in not off-budget funds. We're using low-set money is the proposal. So that wouldn't even affect the bottom line with our budget going forward. So it's another, you know, we're just kind of holding on and waiting to see. But it is good that we can offset lost revenue. So I know almost everybody lost interest income. And our treasurer showed us an anticipated revenue loss of about seventy thousand dollars in interest income. So we can recoup that, that that will certainly help. Some of the other things out of that plan are dollars for schools. Those will be handled and sent directly through CSDE to our schools and there's funds in there for them. They had S R two funding as well as this last, this next recent chunk. There's money in there for childcare. There's money in the bill for rental assistance. And as we get information, we'll start to pass along. Jenny's starting to share information on the rental assistance now. There's money for low-income home energy assistance programs. And then there's direct payments. So those who qualify for those direct stimulus payments. Most people can expect to start seeing those direct deposits if that's the way you filed your taxes returns. And they're saying Wednesday, the seventeenth is when the bulk of people will see that. I do know some people this weekend as early as Saturday morning had funds in their bank, but they were being held until they're available. So the Treasury is now saying and banks are able to say because they've got more guidance that by Wednesday, those funds should be available. So they'll be able to be some help. There's, you know, summer enrichment school support in that bill. So there's, it's a lot of dollars, a lot of dollars going out in into different communities to help with the economic pain of this bill. I'm sorry, I've just pandemic. Questions about the ARP? I keep wanting to say AARP, but that is not it. So if you have any questions and you don't have them tonight, you think about them, send them over. If I don't have the answer, I'll forward them to our state and federal partners. CCM is working to funnel a lot of questions of municipalities forward. And I will tell you, our senators and congressmen have been incredibly responsive through this process and and holding again through CCM meetings with municipal leaders. So we have an avenue to ask our questions. So don't hesitate if you have one and want to know how it's going to affect our community. What I, one more thing I do would like to put together is, excuse me. I'd like to put together a working group to work on determining the best way to utilize these funds. Again, coming in two pots over two years, but can be spent through twenty twenty-four, so we can have a plan for some unspent. So it's not like we're going on a shopping spree kind of thing. So you know, I'm thinking someone from EDC, someone from the Board of Finance, myself and our business manager. You know, start to look at a solid plan of how to use these funds. And as we get all of the information, you know, getting those stakeholders in in the room and start to work on a solid plan on how to spend the funds. I will let you know, we had we have a staff member in the finance office who is out unexpectedly. And we're not sure for how long. And so that leaves us with a gap. As you know, we are bare bones here. You hear me say it all the time. I don't think everybody truly gets it. I know the two of you understand it. There are three people in our finance office, an accounts payable person, a P, a payroll coordinator, and our business manager. And they have new software that they're just beginning to learn their pieces. So unlike a year ago when they were cross-trained to help each other, they don't know everybody else's tasks within the system. This is really, you know, it's making things difficult. We share the business office with the Board of Education. So the superintendent and I immediately started looking outwards, not to just hire a temp to help us come in because who's going to teach them, right? Who's going to train them and show them what to do? But looking at other towns that are using Infinite Visions, which is our new software, to see if they can assist us and we can utilize some of their already trained staff to come in and they're familiar with the system, while not our accounts, but the system as a whole. And so on Friday, we started contacting some of those. I'll keep you posted. But we're going to need some temporary support in that office. So thank you, Mr. Tulis. I will I will share during Good and Welfare. Okay. Is there anyone present to speak? Or any questions about what I share with you in our finance office? Okay. So now we'll move to the present to speak portion. Is there anyone present to speak? On the call. You can unmute yourself. Ralph, I will share yours as I get to Good and Welfare, sir. All right. Well, seeing none, I'll move on to Good and Welfare. So I'll start. Mr. Tulis wanted to share with us. We have Jeff Kuchko. He was born and raised in Wellington, now lives in Tennessee, is battling stage four kidney cancer. He just got back from visiting him, and so we want to keep him in our thoughts and prayers and send well wishes to Mr. Kuchko. Ralph, thank you for sharing with us. We had several brush fires over the last week. Things are dry out there. We were dry before the winter season and still again encourage residents to be very cautious. Note the fire danger. It's available on the deep website or by calling our fire departments to see what the fire danger on any given day is before prior to any potential burning. So please, we want to look out for each other. And you know, if you have anything burning, please be aware of it at all times, but contact the fire departments prior to make sure you have the right permits to burn. You can find continued COVID information and a lot of the very specific data I share in these meetings at ct.gov backslash coronavirus. Mobile Food Share is again this Wednesday from eleven to eleven thirty here at the Town Office Building. If you have any questions, you can contact Human Services. If you can, please, please, please support our local businesses and restaurants. Absolutely, right here in Wellington, but certainly our surrounding towns. We are a community that extends far past our Wellington borders. So if you can, we realize that everybody can't. Wellington Day on a plugaway is Saturday, August twenty eighth. We all need something to look forward to. If you have any questions, you can contact Sarah Reese at willingtonday@willingtonct.org. Continue to wear your masks, wash your hands, social distance is necessary. I want to take a minute to say it's been, it's been a year since we it's been a year today since I had sent out a notice that we were abruptly closing the doors here at the Town Office Building to keep everyone safe and be cognizant. I didn't imagine when I wrote that letter and sent it out that we would, a year later, still the door's locked. I'm happy that we're able to see people. But we're not quite back to normal. I want to really think of the the families that we lost, not just due to coronavirus, but we we lost friends and neighbors. The people weren't able to mourn in a typical way. We weren't able to celebrate in a typical way. We had a challenging year. COVID was just the tip of the iceberg for what our community went through. But I couldn't think of a better place to be and a better group of people to go through this with. So we're going to get there. We're getting back to normal. We have plans to open the doors. I have a plan to open the swap shop. The swap shed is open and folks. But we ask that you just, everybody continue. Same thing we said a year ago, do your part. Think beyond yourself. I'm happy to say that there are probably people on this meeting who are now fully vaccinated. And and hopefully, you know, safe from from any serious illness. And thank you. Thank you, John and Liza, for all you continue to do and just, you know, March twenty-six will be our first Zoom meeting for kicks. I watched it a couple of weeks ago. We've gotten much better at this. That's for sure. It was interesting to say the least. So it's been quite a year. We're not out of the woods by any stretch, but we certainly, we can, we can see a light. And I appreciate all that everyone here has done, every board member, every first responder, every student, our teachers and our students, I think bore a huge brunt of this and, you know, changed a hundred-year-old method of educating young people. So those are my thoughts. John, Liza, anything?
I should have written down the hours, but I understand the library is open now, so that's
Yes. They're not completely fully open like before, but they sure are. Their doors are open and and they've saved some time for seniors on, I believe, Mondays. I think is their day for seniors, so.
It has been Mondays for seniors. I think they're going to open that up now to
To everyone.
To everyone.
Yeah. And we're waiting for more guidance on the senior center. In the meantime, the senior center has been painted on the inside. So when we get back there, people will be able to see it fresh and bright and beautiful. So we're moving in a direction where, you know, we're opening things up and we just, we want to do it right and still keep people safe. So if nothing else from John or Liza, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, and this is a non-debatable matter. All those in favor? Thank you. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you. You too.
Hey, good night.
Good night.